Possible, and that's the reasoning, so we can make it out there to show respect. So, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda review will not take very long. Just a reminder that you do have the selection of a vice mayor. Hopefully, it'll not take three days and 10 votes, or whatever.
No promises.
Yeah. And then, you have someone on the public agenda as well. On page two, number one, under new council business, this is an allocation of $20,675 in opioid settlement funds to Safe Streets Wichita for the purchase and distribution of 800 naloxone kits to reverse opioid overdoses. They have been doing this for a period of time. Also, they've been involved in a program with police and some other agencies on the use of Narcan, again, to save lives from overdoses. This is a five-month distribution, and then, in the meantime, between now and the end of that timeframe, we'll be working with them on a longer-range plan. And police will be actively involved in the development of that plan. Number two is approval of the 2023 Water Conservation Rebate Program. This is the allocation of $150,000 to provide rebates to residents that purchase water-saving appliances. That's all I have on page two. On page three, this is a contract through our purchasing process for the purchase of access control system and security camera system components. Number four is approving a supplemental design agreement for Phase One of the Clap Park improvements. This project will include improvements to pedestrian bridges in the park, an inclusive playground, excuse me, the construction of an inclusive playground, parking lot improvements, and a dog park. That's all I have on page three. Nothing on page four. Page five, 2A, is approval of a supplemental design agreement to develop a final design concept and the cost estimate for the pickleball complex at South Lakes Park. Number three is approving IRB ordinance for the actual issuance of the IRBs for the construction of a 12,000-square-foot expansion at JR Custom Metal Products. Council has previously approved the letter of intent for this project. Mayor, that is all I have.
Just real quick before I think we grab our coats and head towards the front, and I'm only asking this because it might not be in the green sheet, but also, I think it's important as we discuss it. With the revisions for the Clap Park master plan, the inclusive playground, and thank you, council member, for adding that, will this be the first inclusive playground for kids who are, or folks who suffer from disabilities and would need an inclusive playground? Is this the first one in the city at this point that we know of?
Well, Cedro County Park has one, and then, we do have, we do make ADA accommodations in our park, in our playgrounds, but this will be the, it's the scope and scale of this playground that's different than what we have in our system.
Okay. So, the county does have one, thank you for that, because I don't want to, I don't want to represent that this, the first one in the city, but this will be the first one that is at the scale that we're aiming towards.
Right.
Thank you for that. Any questions for manager? Again, the goal, particularly for those, apologize to staff, who will be on a recess as we go, honor our fallen firefighter, but then we will reconvene back here for the remainder of the presentation.
One consent there on those Firefly improvements, is that taking some, is that taking some of that existing neighborhood out of the floodplain, or do we know what exactly is going on there?
I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm not sure.
Just on 1A, you're on consent. Nope, I apologize. It's from, never mind.
Okay. That's a difference, that's a previous. Yep, got it.
Did a department report after this?
Yes, from Public Works. Yep. All right. Let's go, go. Let's break and come back.
Thank you for taking the time. Nina, are you going to start off?
Yes, I'll be starting. All right. Good morning. My name is Nina Rasmussen. I'm in Public Works and Utilities. And with me here today, I have Laura Lombard, who is the Chair of the Sustainability Integration Board. And we'll be providing an update to you today on the board, as well as the city's most recent CDP score. So just a little bit of background. CDP is an organization that helps cities and companies compile data and information on their environmental actions, plans, and progress in order to compare amongst peers and also against best practices. So this is a survey that we submit every year. And we submit through the city surveys. There is also a company one, but those ones are not compared across. So we are comparing ourselves to our peer cities. In our previous years of submitting the survey, we have gotten a D score, which is the lowest score available. But this year, we have achieved a C score, so a bit of an improvement there. And just to briefly go over what those scores mean, this is a standard letter system, D, which they consider disclosure, is really when cities are just getting started, they're disclosing what information they do have on hand, but they may not have the resources to gather that critical necessary data that CDP is asking for. So that's where we were in previous years. This year, we are in C, which is considered awareness. So we have provided some of that critical data to CDP, and we are beginning to take action to reduce and mitigate our environmental risks to our community. B is considered management. This is where a lot of cities sort of strive to achieve. This is where all the data that is requested is provided to CDP, and cities are actively taking action to mitigate those environmental risks and increase community resiliency. A is considered leadership. That's very similar to B in that all those critical pieces are in place, but this also means that these are leaders in the field. These are people who, cities and people who are setting ambitious goals and targets and are utilizing best practices. So a little bit about our score, I know this can be a bit challenging to see on the screen here if you're in the room, but this breaks down our C score a little bit in comparison to our regional peers and our global peers. So we're on par with the regional distribution of scores. That is a C average. It's a little bit all over the map here, as far as, we have a lot of As and Bs, as well as a lot of Ds in the area. So it sits around that C average, so we're right on track there. Globally, it's a little more heavy on the D area. We do have a D average globally, so we are doing a bit better on that end. You can also see down below, it breaks out the score to a separate adaptation score and a mitigation score. The adaptation score means that, based on the data we provided, that's how they're assessing how well we, as a city, are able to adapt to climate risks and hazards as a community. The mitigation score means that this data is showing how well we can mitigate those risks to begin with, how well we can combat those. And so that's how they break those out, and it does come together for a general C average. It's a little challenging, I know, to see on the right here, but this just gives an idea of all the critical components that CDP is asking for. And if you can see, there is one checkmark that we have checked off right now, as far as what we have provided, but we do still have a long ways to go. And I will touch on that here in just a moment. So how did we get here? How did we achieve our C score? We did that by thoroughly gathering all of the information that was available to us and spending a decent amount of time submitting this information. And so that looked like identifying several risks, environmental risks in the community, and how that might impact our community now and in the future. We were also able to provide a partial greenhouse gas inventory with some air quality data that we had on hand, as well as providing some statistics on transportation, energy, waste, and water. And then we were also able to show how we are taking action and how we are prioritizing this work by providing more information on what we're doing as a government entity. So those included forming the Sustainability Integration Board and having that part of this conversation and this process, but also contracting with WSU's Environmental Finance Center to put together the Sustainability Initiatives Report, which provides a list of potential projects that will help us improve. And of course, we're only able to do this work by having city resources and support in order to prioritize this type of work. So how do we get to a B in the future? Again, that list that had the one, just the one item checked off, we have several more to do. That includes really fleshing out the greenhouse gas inventory and making it comprehensive. That looks at both city operations and community emissions as well, to pull it all together. Looking a little more deeply at the climate risk and vulnerability, so we did identify some risks, but this would really take a deeper dive to look at who, which communities might be impacted most greatly, and really assessing and having a better understanding of what those risks are. And this all culminates really in our climate mitigation and adaptation plans. So this means, these are plans on how we reduce and prevent these climate risks and hazards from happening, and also, how do we live with those current climate hazards and risks that we're facing today that we might face in coming years? So that might look like asking questions like, what do we need to reduce harmful emissions in our community, and by how much? So this means that these plans will include measurable targets and goals. That way, we can assess our progress as we go along. And of course, to achieve that B score, we do need continued resources and support from the city to prioritize this work. If we're looking at a timeline to achieve this, assuming that we have one or two staff members completing this work, as well as help from the Sustainability Integration Board, we can expect a greenhouse gas inventory to be completed this spring and into the early summer. Following that, we will look to the climate risk and vulnerability assessment being completed in the fall or winter of this year, and that will be able to be pulled together and have any other goals, targets, and narrative put in place for a climate mitigation and adaptation plan in mid to late 2024. We're able to do this in part because we do have a new partnership with ICLI, which is a resource that provides technical assistance to municipalities to be able to fill out these components. So they provide a lot of staff templates, programs, and resources so that there is guidance for staff to be able to complete this work. And with that, I will pass it over to Laura to talk a little bit more about the Sustainability Board.
Sounds good, Nina. Thank you for having me today. So first, I'm going to go over a little bit of background on the Sustainability Integration Board, just as kind of a reminder, and then we'll talk about the progress that was made during this first year. So back in September of 2021, you all approved the board. Thank you very much for doing that. We first convened a couple of months later, in December of 2021, so a little over a year ago. The purpose of the Sustainability Integration Board is a few things. One, of course, we want to look at, how do we improve across the board sustainability issues in our city? We'll talk about this a little bit later in another slide, but really what we're looking at is threefold. How do we improve our economic development through these projects? How do we improve our environmental situation? And also, how do we improve our social equity within the city? So sustainability, most of the time, people think of as just environmental, but it's all three of those things, okay? So as we're, as I get to the part where we talk about some of the projects we're looking into, those three things are in mind when we're doing that. We're also trying to engage more of the community through this Sustainability Board. Over the course of the first year, we started off, of course, organizing ourselves, you know, getting our bylaws set up, electing the chair and vice chair, where we were, you know, kind of the overall vision of what we wanted to do with the board. That was maybe the first quarter of last year. Second quarter was instituting committees. So committees that we were able to bring in more of the community in various different areas. So looking at economic development is one of the committees that I'm personally on. Looking at green spaces, how can we better utilize or increase our green spaces in the city? Energy efficiency, those types of areas that we wanted to get more community involvement. Community involvement could be individuals who are interested in these areas, could be businesses, but really just trying to bring in a good cohort of people across the community that are interested in elevating sustainability within our community. Some of the contributions that we have and will continue to do, figuring out more long-term planning strategies, so talking with Nina and other staff members about what the WSU financial plan looked like, utilizing that. How do we utilize what we learned from that in a more coherent plan over the coming months and years? Short-term strategy, we created, given the $100,000 you allocated to us this coming year, we figured out, okay, how are we going to utilize that budget in the short term to start getting some, at least smaller projects going? Looking at residential, resident concerns and priorities within the city, so again, utilizing the committees I mentioned to also hear from the community, what would they like to see Wichita do in this regard? And then prioritizing, of course, sustainability, our sustainability report initiatives, so the ones that Nina reported on just a few minutes ago. This diagram shows how we will be scoring through the Sustainability Board, the different projects we want to do. So as I mentioned earlier, there's really the three buckets. You're looking at economic development, or in this case, this would be economic responsibility, are the projects going to eventually pay for themselves, right? You put the investment in upfront, over time, what's the ROI on those? We'll be looking at, of course, the environmental piece, so emission reductions, natural resource management, how are we getting ahead of any safety concerns for residents that have to do with environmental issues, those types of issues? And then, lastly, of course, on the social side, how are these projects benefiting the community? Are they benefiting and elevating maybe portions of our community that are more disenfranchised and helping them? Those types of things are how we're scoring the various projects that we want to look So it is a work in progress. This last probably three to four months, we spent quite a bit of time taking ideas that came up through the committees and evaluating which ones we wanted to do next year, given the budget that we have. I'll give a good example. We want to, last year, you also passed $10,000 in adding trees to our community. We're fleshing out exactly how we want to do this, but we also want to match that $10,000 to add more trees to the community through the Sustainability Board. That may be, you know, you're doing it on public lands, we may use $10,000 to supplement community members to be able to add more trees to their property, as an example, something that we're looking into at the very least. We also want to look at projects, and are looking at projects that will kind of go under our theme this coming year of Wichita leading by example. So projects like that, you all, as council members, voted to add the $10,000, and so you're leading by example. Through our projects, we would also like to elevate that more and get more community involvement to do similar things that the city itself is doing. So that's a theme that we're working on for this year. That's, I think, the main thing there. And this is an example of what you'll be seeing from us very soon, in terms of the projects that we're going to propose within the next month or so. So this is, I might have Nina explain this a little bit more, but this is the type of document you'll see that's evaluating the different criteria as we look at each of those projects. So for future work and goals, I'm going to skip to the second one first, we really want to make sure that there's good cross-departmental collaboration on these various projects. It'll take, it'll take someone who can coordinate the different departments to be able to make some of these projects happen, which leads me to the last one, which is, we would love to see you all consider a sustainability office that would have a staff member or two, who would be that person who could really coordinate the various projects and the reporting that needs to be done to get us up to that B level. That's something we would love to see the city consider. And I'm going to leave it there. That's it. Any questions for either Nina or I?
Also, there are council allocation rules, anything you can give a little bit about that.
Laura, I made reference to that. Laura, you want to talk more about that $100,000? And maybe go to that example that you had up there for the small electric, because that gives you an idea of the thought process, yeah?
This one? Yep. Yeah, so you allocated the $100,000 towards the Sustainability Integration Board in July, I believe. We'll actually have access to that fund starting now. What we're going to do with that is, or what we have done with that is figure out what our budget's going to look like over this first calendar year. With this particular example, let's see, if we were going to do this one, this isn't actually one of the projects that we're personally going to do, but Nina, actually, you want to explain this a little bit more?
So I just pulled an example of a project that's actually part of our BIL conversations, but just to give an idea, it's a brief summary of what we would be proposing and how the funds would accomplish the goals of the city's environmental goals and the goals of the board through the ordinance, making sure that we are achieving that. This would probably be also alongside a longer proposal, but this is just a summary to sort of introduce a project for recommendation and then take the next steps from there. But it looks at what the logistics would be, what is the impact of the project on different sustainability areas? So it does bring in that matrix score, a benefit cost ratio as well, and it looks at how this lines up with adaptation and mitigation, best practices, as well as the city's vision, mission, and values. So it rolls that all into one in a brief summary, so we can see sort of side by side different projects and how they sort of stack up.
So would it be fair to say, is, will money be spent on analysis and research, or on lobbying and maybe promoting a certain idea?
This is, the board has largely talked about implementing projects that would benefit residents here in the community. So anything that would be community-facing would likely be projects that they would bring for recommendation.
But not necessarily for promotion. When you, council member, when you approved this, it was specifically to downplay just public education efforts, instead to bring a business case for each project back? And that's the reason I wanted this up here. You'll see there's a benefit cost ratio attached to this project, and so, and then a matrix score. So it's meant to be basically a business analysis for every project that came out of the committees, and then the committee will decide on what the final projects are that seem to have the best benefit for the community.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
So, one, appreciate all your work on this. I was looking at, I didn't want to cut you off, so on slides six and seven, we were looking at everything that that was talking about, is that more just impact to the city as a whole, or city government taking those actions, or a mixture of both?
This covers the city as a whole. So some of these are broken up separately, where you'll look at government operations and community separately. Some of them are together. I know for, for instance, the greenhouse gas inventory, that is usually done in two pieces, where you're looking at government operations, and then you're also looking at residences and businesses together. But as far as the risk and vulnerability assessment, that's going to be community-wide, and then the mitigation and adaptation plans will also look at it more community-wide.
Okay. Is there a heavier weight on the score for city government kind of taking lead and doing things more so than the policies that impact everyone else?
We don't currently have weights on the scores, but we have considered taking a look at that and assessing if we wanted to prioritize government actions that would be public-facing or more internal policies and projects that would bring the city forward. So that's always something that we can discuss further to revise.
Okay. And my last question, is there a potential checklist of what's being looked for that maybe we all could have from the Sustainability Board to kind of spark some thoughts about as we go forward with policy or projects, to kind of think, we can hit this area here or hit that area?
Yeah, so the EFC report actually lists out a bunch of different projects, and it does note how the scores will be impacted, so that's a great starting place. It's not an exhaustive list, so there's always more policy and projects that we can add on to that. But we also have a general list of what CDP is looking for, and that's always something that we can reference and make sure that we're hitting all those points, especially as we go into the survey time, as that opens up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, please?
Just want to compliment, not just the presentation, but also utilizing a third-party as a checklist on how to get us up to the national standard. And I really appreciate the conversation about working with other boards. We know that the, for example, the Park Board has a large interest in green space. It seems like there's a large interest in trees, and we're seeing much more synthesizing of boards communicating with each other and having an impact on our budget and our process overall. So do you want to thank you for that? Because I think that we have some really great potential as we march forward by utilizing shared knowledge to achieve shared goals. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.